One, please rise as Deputy Secretaries Liz Corey will lead us in the invocation, followed by a pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our City Secretary, Jenna Lewella.
Most gracious heavenly Father, as I come out of the slumbers of daylight savings time this week, I thank you for the awakening of the upcoming spring season, which is felt all around us. From the blue bonnets dotting the roads and the highways, which will soon give way to radiant wildflowers, to the feeling of a spring rainstorm and the glorious sunrays shining down afterwards. As the grass and plants turn a vibrant green, we chase away the cold, dark days of winter. Thank you for the beauty that exists in this world and providing new growth all around us. As we begin this meeting of the City Council, we ask for your guidance and insight. Help us all engage in meaningful discussion and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as decisions are made which affect the citizens, visitors, businesses, leadership, and staff of this city. I pray for those who serve the city to not the Mayor Protem, council members, and community and city leaders. Graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and the needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And I especially pray tonight for the agenda that is set before them. Allow patience for our leaders to reflect on past successes, hard lessons learned, and with open eyes have the ability to analyze for the future growth of our amazing town and those who work and live here. In your name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. So I need a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you both. Okay, if I make an announcement on the... Okay. Citizens who desire to address the Council on any matter made, who may sign up, do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the City Council. We have several people here. Larry McColl.
I'm Larry Mychuk. I live north of Fort Worth. No better. It does not make any of us a better person if we are inclusive or compatible with erroneous ideas and beliefs, even those held by friends or relatives, or by the voting majority, or the vocal minority, or by political leaders, or religious leaders, or by those threatening our reputation or our livelihood. It does not make any of us a better person if we are inclusive or compatible with erroneous ideas and beliefs, even those held by friends and relatives, or by the voting majority, or the vocal minority, or by political leaders, or religious leaders, or by those threatening our reputation or our livelihood. No better.
Thank you, sir.
And one of the triage nurses made a comment because she said she has never seen this amount of children going to the emergency room from school in the EMPs. So with humanity hungry for supernatural things, I couldn't help but notice what our community and our city is offering our children that's supernatural. Right here in the railroad, let me get up, where is it at? Sorry, guys. April 1st, we have a class, a five-hour class, that is at, it's at the railroad museum, and it's going to be about five hours. There's five different classes, and the recommended ages are five to 16 years old. It's sold out. One of those classes is divination. Okay? So what's the definition of the, of this thing that it's called? And I'm shaking up here because this is a plea to stop this type of spiritual occult practices and teachings in our community. I don't think you guys want to answer to parents whose children are going there and they're playing with all of these different witchcraft spells that they'll be learning and divination readings. So they're calling out to dead spirits and to spirits for future, for psychic reasons. And divination is the practice of seeking knowledge of the future, the unknown by spiritual means. So we are literally teaching our community occult practices that are going to cause harm to our children. And I am pleading with the city to please rethink this and have caution regardless of your spiritual walk or beliefs, or even if you believe in the spiritual realm and opening up very dark portals to demonic activity with what age? Five-year-olds to six-year-olds? Okay, so I am pleading for that to stop because it is a warning that danger will come upon our children, upon our households and our communities when we start making wands, casting spells, making potions, and reaching out to the dead and to other spiritual entities that are harmful to our families and our children. So my plea is that we will stop this event, and if not, we're going to have to teach classes on how to break curses in the name of Jesus. Please heed my words and stop this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. Barb Gilbertson?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to share my heart. I'm Barb Gilbertson. I live off of Adams in a Belton housing area, 13757 Dandelion Trail. So my heart is, just like Elena said, my heart is really sad for our community children when our leaders advertise and are unable to protect those of our community that depend on your wisdom. The Mogul Mayhem event is very troubling to me. A friend sent me the definition of mayhem, and mayhem means needless or willful damage or violence, willful and permanent crippling mutilation or disfigurement of any body, any part of the body, resulting in the impairment of a person's fighting ability. To this definition, they will be giving attendees instructions on, just like Elena said, how to make wands, articulate spells, produce potions, encourage divination, and the like. What is the Lord showing us that we would allow something like this in our community and our surrounding area? What is the Council lacking that they don't know any better than to validate this kind of event? These classes lead into negative spirituality, witchcraft, and wiccans. This type of encouragement inserted in our community and the lives of those who participate, all types of negative spiritual actions. Please, let's reconsider what's going on with this type of event in something where the city is advertising it in a newsletter. It is just, it was very harmful. It's very hurtful to me that the city would do that.
Thank you, Barb. Alan Lidle. See here? There he is.
Good evening, Council. Alan Lidle, 504 Paseo Del Plaza. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a couple of the unsung heroes of our city departments. It's the middle of the night, cold, and a water main breaks. Doesn't have to wait till in the morning, doesn't have to wait for a week. That night, our city crews are out there fixing that water. If it's freezing cold as it was last year, they're out there fixing those water mains, turning off the water for you if yours hasn't break. These people really do deserve our appreciation, our gratitude, and our thanks for all the hard work they put in. The others are the ones that are being picked on the most at Facebook this week, the last couple of weeks, and that's our boys out there trying to get all the trash and limbs from this last ice storm. They have been working day and night to get as much as they can in a very good-sized city, and only, I think, two crews being able to do it. But pick it on them. Let them do their job. And if you see one of them, because they do have to occasionally get out of the truck and load stuff up by hand instead of being able to use a loader, go out and say, "Thank you so much. We appreciate it."
Thank you, Mr. Lidle. Ms. Frazier?
They're feeling like they're not hearing it real well. In fact, now it sounds a lot different. I did sign up online also, but I don't know. It said it uploaded it, but it doesn't really give you a confirmation anywhere. So I'm not sure what happened. I do know that the form was filled in with my name and address and everything. So I'm just letting you know that I did sign up online, and they started the cloth already, and I haven't started what I had to say. So I'd like them to start it again. Anyway, why is it the mayor and city council seek to promote evil and ungodliness in our city? First DEI, which is of the devil, evil, and indoctrination. And there's the library issues and putting books in the children's area, sexualizing the kids, promoting transgenderism, sexual perversion, and on and on. Now you're promoting muggy mayhem, which is first a cover, which is just a cover to involve any citizens and their children in witchcraft and sorcery. God's Word says Leviticus 19:2, "Do not practice divination or sorcery." Leviticus 19:31, "Do not turn to mediums or wizards. Do not seek them out to be deviled by them. I am the Lord your God." Studiognomy 181012, "Let no one be found among you who practices divination or sorcery, interprets omens, engages in witchcraft, casts spells, or who is a medium or spirituous, or who consults the dead. Anyone who does these things is detestable to the Lord." I'm really shocked when you, who are supposed to be Christians, are promoting these ungodly agendas to our families and children. You are detestable to the Lord and our community. We now encourage you to be strong and courageous and pull the plug in this scheme from the gates of hell and Satan himself. 1 Peter 5:8, "Your enemy, the devil, prowls around like a roaring lion, looking for someone to devour." Galatians 5:1920, "The acts of the sinful nature are obvious, sexual immorality, impurity, and debauchery, adultery, and witchcraft. I warn you, as I did before, those who live like this will not inherit the kingdom of God." There's also Leviticus 26 and 27, 2 Kings 21:6, "He sacrificed his own son in the fire, abortion by chemicals and pills in this age. Practiced sorcery and divination, and consulted mediums and wizards. He did much evil in the sight of the Lord, provoking him to anger." Isaiah 8:19, "The living Bible used to be, in the past, those deemed witches and diviners were burned to death. Now you're wanting to go to the opposite extreme." And allow it to be taught to our children at a public place where families are invited so they can learn to cast spells and conjure up demons. This is not an activity any normal, God-fearing citizen would want to be a part of. And as a citizen, what gives you all the right to expose our children to this evil mythology?
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Esperanza, Janice?
Good afternoon. I'm Esperanza Janice. I'm a homeowner on South 30th Street, and my request is that perhaps for a future agenda item, we can discuss the pickup of the branches that were falling from the storm. I understand that crews are limited, but some of the branches are actually blocking the streets, causing traffic jams where you have to pull over to the side to allow people to pass, and also preventing lawn maintenance. So I just wondered if the Council would consider having that as an agenda item so at least the citizens will know what the plan, if there is a plan in place, and what that plan is for having those branches picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. While we're not able, whoo, that microphone is on.
While we're not able to have a dialogue, I am able to provide factual information, and I do have an update on our brush-and-bulk pickup. We are going to be contracting with a company to help our solid waste team that is working very hard, but is just overwhelmed with the amount of debris from the storm. So we'll be, this is breaking news. We've just had meetings and established the relationship in the last couple of days. So there'll be more public information forthcoming about what residents can expect, but we will be bringing in a contractor, which will help us expedite the opportunity to get all of the limbs picked up. We appreciate the public's patience with us and understand that it's a big cleanup job, but also understand that everybody's ready, including myself, for the limbs to be gone. So we will be bringing in outside resources to help our crews catch up, and you should see some major progress. They'll be working seven days a week until we get that cleaned up. So more to come on that, but I did, that's kind of hot off the press, so I did want to address that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to either... Oh, do we have one on the virtual? Okay, sorry.
Can y'all hear me? Am I... Y'all hear me?
Yes, Ms.?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. CJ Grisham, Airport Trail here in Temple. I just wanted to make a quick compliment to the Temple Parks and Recreation. We held an event this past weekend that was the 10th Annual Open Carry Texas Hike that started it all, and that hike commemorated an unjust and unlawful arrest by Temple Police 10 years ago while lawfully carrying a firearm. And in the last 10 years, I've personally noticed and seen a lot of progress in the city of Temple with respect to rights and the attitude of the police department and essentially doing the right thing. And the last two police chiefs that we've had have done a really good job at ensuring that the focus is on the people. Obviously, we still got some ways to go, but I wanted to compliment the police chief for his efforts to the current existing officers who are out there trying their best to do the right thing, and we had no problems whatsoever on our hike, Parks and Wildlife, or Parks and Recreation, excuse me, worked very closely with us to help ensure that our 10-mile hike went off without any issues, kept in constant contact and communication with me both over the phone and email. And so I wanted to reach out to them. I know we didn't really do much with the park, but I wanted to highlight and thank them on behalf of Open Carry Texas for allowing us to park there at the Crossroads Recreational Complex, and also for the coordination that we were able to have with Temple PD and Bell County Sheriff's Department. But I just think the last 10 years, we've seen a lot of progress. We are moving in the right direction as it relates to community relations and community policing. And I would just encourage the chief of police to continue down that positive road to make more improvements and also just laud the officers for doing the right thing on a daily basis and also holding those accountable that don't. That's pretty much it. Thank you all for this opportunity, and have a great week.
Thank you very much. It's always nice to hear some good compliments, and we do appreciate our officers for all the work that they do. We'd like to now have a special recognition. We're going to recognize the Temple Public Library for receiving the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Excellence Award for 2022. Erin?
Thank you. Natalie, could you bring your team with you today? Okay, come down here, and I'll go ahead and get started. So what we're doing here is that the Temple Public Library did receive the 2022 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, which is an affiliate of the Texas Municipal League. To successfully receive the achievement of the Library Excellence Award, the applicant must exhibit excellence in each of 10 categories. Those categories include services to underserved populations through outreach, special programs, collaborations with other libraries or organizations, special classes or special collections, innovative and effective marketing materials highlighting basic services, and publicity about special programs and library offers, collaborative efforts with community organizations, enhanced service to the public during the past year, either through increase in service or a change in type of services, literacy support for all ages, support for digital inclusion through public internet access, digital literacy training and online library services, support for workforce development, cultural, topical, and educational programming for adults and families, professional staff training to include training opportunities for staff at all levels, and any other initiatives that speak to library excellence. The Temple Public Library did demonstrate distinction with many of its programs and services, including their infant outreach, homebound 2022 summer reading program, the Seed Library, and their book of librarian and notary services. And of 542 public libraries in Texas, only 73 have received this award in 2022. And we are proud that the Temple Public Library is one of those libraries, and happy to present them with this award on behalf of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Congratulations. Thank you so much, Erin, for presenting that. And I just wanted to say thank you to my team. I did not win this award. The library staff won this award. I copy and pasted their accomplishments into a form. So I wanted to make sure they were recognized for all of the wonderful things that they do for our community. Thank you.
Library is a very important part of our whole community, and so, yes, we want to continue to do the best we can and to provide all the educational and reading materials that's necessary. So thank you all for all your work. We'll go on to our consent agenda. All these items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the Council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of its council member and will be considered separately. So at this time, do we have any items that need to be discussed or removed? Okay, we'll go ahead and go with the consent agenda from items A, 4A to 4L. Okay, we're not getting the right. Yes. Motion passes three to zero. So we're having some technical difficulties up here, but we're getting it. Okay. Regular agenda. We will have the 2023-0008-0, first reading of our public hearing of FY23-13ZC, considering adopting ordinance for rezoning request from agriculture to plant development with development site plan approval for single-family attachment 3PD-SFA-3 on 61.844 plus acres located in the city of Temple. Property identification number 12859, addressed at 5020 Shallow Board Road. Brian?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. This item has been requested to be tabled until the April 6th City Council meeting. The developer, Todd Scott, from Cross Plains Development, is here, can answer any questions if you, but it's up to you all if you wanted to open the public hearing and presentation or just take action on the request to table.
Staff would recommend just tabling the item, including the presentation and the public hearing to the next meeting.
Passes three to zero. We'll go on to number six, which is 2023-0009, oh, first reading of the public hearing FY2312ZC, consider adopting ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agricultural to plant development urban states PDUE on 62.362 plus acres located in Bell County, Texas, addressed at 9563 Old Highway 95 and being the same property made the subject of annexation case number FY-22-8-ANX. Brian?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, members of Council. So here are the zoning case for the 63 acres and change that was just read in. You can see it's along Old Highway 95 and that that is also associated with a recent voluntary annexation by the property owner with hopes to be able to develop it, and the zoning case is part of that. So you can see the aerial on the right, farmland, and the voluntary annexation that was approved last month, the current zoning. And by default, when property is brought into the city, it's agriculture zoning. And then this is proposed for residential or single-family detached kind of traditional, single-family development. The subdivision plant, which is named Cotton Bottom Phase 1, is under review and would serve as the planned development site plan if approved. It proposes 60 lots, and the zoning requested is urban estate. And so on the right, you can see Cotton Bottom Estates Phase 1. Once again, 60 lots, half-acre in size. One of the reasons or the need for the planned development is to allow half-acre, which is just under 22,000 square feet, instead of the 22,500 square feet minimum required by urban state. And so the planned development would allow the reduction in the lot area. And of course, half-acre meets minimum septic requirements by state law, but also Bell County. And these are proposed to be on septic. In terms of the comprehensive plan, residential and neighborhood service is the area designation, I should say, for this area, and it's consistent with that designation. Looking at the thoroughfare plan, Old Highway 95, it's classified as a minor arterial, and then... And then a future east-west minor arterial to the north on other property. And then the plat proposes a new east-west collector that is shown on the plat as Emery Road. And you can see that's a purple dashed line towards the southern end of the development. In terms of trails master plan, there are no trails identified for this particular area. And sidewalks would be required along the abutting sections of Old Highway 95 and the new Emery Road. And then also mobility master plan recommends upgrading Old Highway 95 to a three lane arterial. So that one of those lanes includes a continuous turn lane with bike lanes, sidewalks. The applicant would provide the six foot sidewalk. Utilities, city of Temple water is available. You can see an eight inch line there on Old Highway 95. No sewer. And so the septic systems for each lot would be required to sustain the development and would require Bell County Public Health District approval. And the school district that is impacted is Academy Independent School District. So here's the site. That includes a couple of outbuildings on the left. So those are a barn and another accessory structure that's not a home or dwelling unit. And agricultural land. And so property owners within 200 feet were notified by state law and city ordinance. And that, because these are larger properties, that only included six different properties. And we have not received any responses. Our Development Review Committee reviewed this project on February 6th. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission both have recommended approval. P and Z at their February 21st meeting of this year with a vote of five to zero. And subject to the following conditions, first one is that the urban estate district and standards apply except for that minimum of half acre size, allowing a half acre rather than the 22,500. That the property shall substantially comply with the approved site or development plan that Emery Road proposed as the east-west collect neighborhood collector per the thoroughfare plan is, is constructed, which would include the sidewalk requirement, a minimum of at least a single tree in each front yard that a minimum five foot wide sidewalk along Emery Road that are referenced previously. A six foot sidewalk would be required along Old Highway 95, that the site development plan may be adjusted at cladding to satisfy drainage, utility, transportation issues, minor changes without having to come back to city council and planning and zoning commission. And that the planning director have that authority to approve minor changes. That's all that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had one clarifying question. I think I know the answer to it, but just to be clear, the information that you provided on what the mobility master plan recommends for Old Highway 95 is for information for council, but it, it is not something that the developer would be required to construct other than the sidewalk portion. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
That said, something new that, that you'll see going forward. So I just wanted to point out that that doesn't mean the developer would be constructing that roadway, but that is what ultimately the mobility master plan recommends for that area.
No questions? We'll open for public hearing. At this time, I'll open for item number six. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium or raise your hand on the virtual platform.
Just, just to follow up to, to that about the Old Highway 95. Obviously, the developer is not going to do that. Is he going to have to put the six foot sidewalk in far enough away for them to develop Highway 95?
Yes, sir. We, we would work on that design to ensure that future widening.
But he is going to have to put the sidewalk in first, not wait for us to fix the road.
That, that is correct. Okay. Yes, sir.
The other one is, what are you going to do with that little bitty square? If you bring back the picture up. See what I'm talking about? It doesn't look like it's wide enough to do anything with it.
Yes.
What happens to that?
Let's see, let's, let's pull up the development plan. So yes, that you can see, yeah, that would, looks like that would be a city tract for drainage. So that's called, the label is D3 on the plan. So that would be one of the drainage and/or detention areas. Yes, good question. No, sir.
I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions?
You have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here.
Okay. Neil Brinley, Temple, Texas. I said a couple of questions. For transparency sake, who is the owner developer of this property? And has coordination been done with Academy ISD for school buses and that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am. Good questions. The applicant is New American Dream Limited. Mr. J.C. Wall is, is the developer. And, and yes, in terms of coordination with Academy ISD, they were notified during the annexation process by state law, but they're also aware of this very plan. The city has contacted them, but I also know that the developer is working directly with Billy, the superintendent for Academy.
Any other questions or comments? There's no further. I'll close the public hearing. And counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Well, entertain a motion for item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve item six.
Well, second that motion.
Passes three to one. Thank you. Three to zero. What did I say? Three to one? I'm sorry. I'm already thinking on the next one. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. 2023 dash 0010 dash O first reading is a public hearing. For FY 23 dash two dash AB, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the release of a 1.1, 0.1614 acres right of way easement subject to a public utility easement legally described as being a 33 foot wide portion of an unimproved 80 foot wide right of way located west of block one, Keaton addition, in addition to the city of Temple, Temple, Bell County, Texas, according to the map or plat of record in cabinet A, slide 134 dash C, plat records of Bell County, Texas, and located at 814 North 31st Street, Temple, Texas, Bell CAD ID number 127517. Kyle?
Thank you. And this is kind of part two of one you all heard several months ago. It's, it's an abandonment of a right of way. Previously, we abandoned right around the corner on a 20 foot unimproved alleyway. This is 33 feet of an 80 foot right of way. That's also unimproved. Transportation Code, Chapter 311, provides the municipality the authority over the streets and alleys. Specifically, 311 point double oh seven says a home room municipality may vacate, abandon, or close a street or alley. But it does require a public hearing to be held, which is why we are here today. The red there is approximately what is up for consideration. It is on the backside of Wheels Skate Center, right there on 31st is where they are. This will allow them to build a loop around their building as they're expanding their parking. And that's more specifically the exact point 1614 acres of the unimproved North 33rd Street right of way that was designated by the, by the Keaton subdivision plat, but it has never been developed. It is interesting to note that across the street, there are lots. And that's one of the reasons we are only asking for a 33 feet of the 80 feet to be abandoned in this case. Because that will leave sufficient right of way to construct a local road should the property across the unimproved right of way ever choose to develop. There is an eight inch water line located within the right of way as well as an Atmos gas line. So we are going to maintain a public utility easement under that area so that we can still maintain our water line and Atmos can maintain their gas line. So the staff recommendation is that we approve abandonment of the unimproved alley subject to a public utility easement covering the alley. And as right of way, it will be sold. So we do have a broker's opinion. And it'll be approximately $7,050.
I'll, I'll open a public hearing on item number seven. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Would just please step to the podium or raise your hand on the virtual platform and state your name and your address for the record.
Alan Lidle, 504 percent of the plot. I apologize. I think I forgot to say that last time. Just one quick question. It's being, going to be used for a, so they can go around their building. Does that mean, since there are water lines and gas lines under that easement, are you going to restrict them from like paving it or putting concrete on it? Or does it have to be dirt or gravel?
There, there will be paving on it. Um, they'll be able to still access the water lines underneath. But what it will provide is essentially a fire lane around the building. Whereas right now, there would be some difficulty with the fire trucks getting around the building.
And I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion to approve item seven as prevented, as presented by Mr. Nuttall.
Resolution 2023 dash 0083R. Consider adopting a tax abatement agreement which will abate a percentage of the increases in the taxable value of certain real property located on approximately 194 dash seven acre site in the city industrial park and designated as City of Temple's Tax Abatement Reinvestment Zone number 46 between HEB LP and the City of Temple. Ms. Myers?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So this is a companion item to the item H on your consent agenda that was approved earlier this evening. Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312, allows the city council to designate an area of the city as a tax abatement reinvest, reinvestment zone. If that designation is likely to contribute to the retention or expansion of primary employment or to attract major investment within the zone, that would be a benefit to the property and that would contribute to the economic development of the city. Counsel can consider designating a tax abatement reinvestment zone and authorizing abatement if at least two of the following criteria are met. You can see there on the screen, the list of criteria that are in your tax abatement policy. And again, at least two of those conditions must be met as a precedent for considering a tax abatement. Staff has received an application from HEB LP requesting an abatement of a percentage of the increase in the taxable value of certain real property improvements located at or near 4750 Winland Road, which is within the city's north industrial park. I'm sorry, that slide is not up to date. I apologize. So you had your, you had the second reading this evening of the ordinance that created the tax abatement reinvestment zone. And now the item before you is consideration of authorizing a tax abatement agreement. A little bit of background about the project. HEB is considering expanding its existing regional distribution center campus within Temple and plans to include a, the construction of a frozen goods warehouse, but could also include multiple other phases of investment. They plan to invest at least $200 million in the construction of improvements on their site and create at least 100 new full-time jobs as part of the investment. The proposed tax abatement agreement that's before you this evening would grant the company a 10-year abatement on the increase in real property improvements from the city of Temple at the, at 100% for the first five years and 60% for the second five years of the total 10-year agreement. As a condition to the receipt of the abatement, HEB must invest at least $200 million for phase one and create 100 new full-time jobs within phase one. HEB may develop the project in multiple additional phases extending over a period of years. And if so, under this proposed agreement, they would be eligible for separate abatements for each subsequent phase that met certain criteria for additional investment as laid out in the agreement. To be effective, an agreement to abate taxes on real property that is located within a tax increment financing reinvestment zone must be approved by the governing body of each taxing entity that imposes taxes on real property within the TERS and also the Board of Directors for the TERS. The Board of Directors has considered this abatement agreement and has approved it. And Kathy and her team are coordinating with the other governmental bodies to consider the agreement as well. The city staff believes the project meets the various criteria in the city's standards for tax abatement, including that the project involves a minimum increase in property value of 300% for construction of a new facility that the project makes substantial contribution to redevelopment efforts for strategic economic development programs that the project has high visibility, image impact, and is of a significantly higher level of development quality that the project can serve as a prototype or catalyst for other developments of a higher standard and that the project stimulates desired concentrations of employment or commercial activity. The project also expands the employment base, attracts major investments, and contributes to economic development in the city as required by Chapter 312. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good neighbor and 100 jobs. That's great for our community. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve item eight.
I'll second that motion.
Now we'll be considering 2023 dash 0084 dash R resolution appointing members to various city boards and commissions. We have a list of people here that we'd like to read off that have agreed to be part of our different committees or commissions, and we really think, want to thank them. It's, we, we heard some reports today and it was amazing to see the work that's being done by our citizens and volunteers. And we just want to say how we're happy we are and thankful we are that we can have an opportunity to come together and make things happen in our community. And this, the commissions are very, very important. So we really appreciate their work. For the Building and Standards Commission, we were going to reappoint Caleb Angorio and Robert Bass to fill an expired terms ending March 31st, 2025, and appoint Robbie Biston to fill an expired term ending March 31st, 2025. And appoint Casper DeGrae to fill an alter, alternate expired term ending March 31st, 2025. Our Citizen Police Advisory Commission, appoint Ryan Miller to, to fill an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2024. Our Development Standards Advisory Board, reappoint Chuck Luca and Joey Ag to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2026. And appoint Neil Brinley to fill an expired term ending March 31st, 2026. Emergency Service Advisory Board. Emergency Service Advisory Board, appoint Andy Scott and Rodney Duncan to fill unexpired terms ending September 30th, 2024. And our Historic Preservation Board, reappoint Alice Bartley and Kelly Garcia to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2026. And our Library Advisory Board, reappoint Kathy Gatto and Gail Jacobs and James Stanford to fill expired terms ending May, March 31st, 2026. Our Main Street Advisory Board, reappoint Ryan Flores, Jacob Bates, David Patrick, David Shine, Christina Parks, Amanda Carlson, Mike Pendleton, Brooke Fowler, Mary Cannoli. Sorry if I messed up her name. Jeremy Jurassic to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2024, and appoint William Pollock, Bobby Young, Matthew Willenson, to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2024. In our Neighborhood Revolization Advisory Board, we appoint Anna Morris, Shannon Myers, and Rose, Zoe Grant, to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2026. Park and Recreation Advisory Board, appoint Tony Salasov, Angela Cases, and Amanda Swades to fill an expired terms ending March 31st, 2026. Zoning Board of Adjustments, we appoint Robert Bass, Kelly Garcia, Zoe Grant to fill expired terms ending March 31st, 2025. And appoint Robbie Biston to fill an expired term ending March 31st, 2025. Council, you've heard the list. And if there's any questions, if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. And again, I'll, I'll echo what you said earlier. We're very grateful to all the community members who are serving these boards and commissions. They've done a great job and we're grateful for the ones that wanted to continue on.
Right here. We appreciate you. Yes, I will second that motion.
Motion passes three to zero. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.